Good evening, everyone. It's call to order. You're in? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hondrew.
Here.
Commissioner Orvez.
Present.
Commissioner Pastufka.
Here.
Commissioner Schre.
Stanford Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Chuck's out of town on business, so you're stuck with me tonight. We'll see if we can get...
You guys have to record.
Yeah.
So, public comment. Agenda items only. Anybody for a public comment?
No public comment?
Sure.
My name's Dan Colley. I'm one of the board members of the SFAA. I know on your, there's an agenda item tonight regarding the bylaws. I know about a year ago, you guys rebooted the SFAA, and you put me and two other members on that board. Also present is Steve Dobis. He's one of those other board members. Dave Pulis wasn't able to make it tonight. But I just wanted to go over real briefly what we did and how it's different than previous years regarding the SFAA. We kind of drilled into three areas. It was better financial accounting, a requisite fee, and kind of getting the organizations that have bylaws and kind of be better prepared. As some of you know, I am the president of the SFBSA. That's one of the larger organizations in our township. I've been through some ups and downs with that organization. So I kind of came in with a perspective of how we could, you know, better promote athletics in our association, as well as kind of like drill into having a better oversight of some of these organizations. Steve's on the soccer association, one of the other bigger organizations. So I think we kind of came in with a pretty good idea of what needs to be done. In regards to the financial accounting, I'll just give you a brief oversight. Steve has a background in accounting, so thank God for Steve. He has some good insight here. Getting all the organizations that have an EIN number and become nonprofit. Steve came up with an easy handout for these organizations. It takes a few hours for them to go through this process. But when they, when they go through that process, they're then able to set up a bank account in the name of the organization. And that's huge, because we did some research, and some of our organizations have their funds going into personal bank accounts. And I don't think we want that happening, right? So additionally, with bank statements. So now that the organizations would have a bank account in their name, we wanted to have the bank statements come directly from that financial institution utilized by the organization to the township. We suggested that because in my situation with baseball, those were being altered. And so what we were seeing were not the actual bank statements. So this way, it just adds another layer of protection for all these organizations and for the township that these cannot be altered. They're coming directly to you guys. So what, and then lastly, end of the year accounting. Financial accounting would be submitted to the SFAA. So we'd have a chance to overview and look at the finances of these organizations, see if there's anything that might not be, you know, kosher. And we could ask questions of these organizations and just kind of get a better grasp of where they are financially. The requisite fee. This was the second item that we took a look at. With the help of Paula, she kind of gave us an idea of what other townships are doing in terms of bettering the facilities for athletics. And I know I hear it on the baseball side. I know Steve hears it on the soccer side. Parents always looking for, you know, greater and better facilities for athletics. You know, we're a growing community, and we're trying to keep up with other townships. And so I know that with baseball, we were really appreciative to get the three new baseball fields up on top of Fairview. But as an association, we had to make sure we had $15,000 to put towards that project so that Apollo could get the grants. So it shows that like us as an organization are supporting this grant and this project. That's hard for some of these organizations to do just right off the bat. So with this requisite fee that we're asking, we're gonna, we were asking that a $10 fee be applied to every participant in the organizations throughout the year. So that'd be spring and fall season. So if your kid plays in the spring and he plays in the fall, they're, you know, they'll get hit $20, right? For that. We thought that that would generate, based on the number of participants in the township, close to $25,000, $30,000 a year. That money would be in an account that's controlled by the township. We didn't, we didn't want the organizations to be worried about it. They would pay this money to the township. Goes into a fund. And then from that fund, they could make application to use that money at some point in time. So if there is a project that they want to do this time, there's money kind of being set aside for it in an account controlled by the township that they don't really have to necessarily worry about. So I thought that would be a good thing. We kind of toyed around with that $10 fee. Some entities do $20. We thought we'd start at 10, kind of see how that goes, and kind of go from there. Additionally, talking with Chuck and John and Paula, I think it was a great idea that funds that an organization would want to contribute in addition to that would be matched by the township. So in that kind of situation, that gives more incentive to get the money out of the organization's bank accounts into this other fund. And then it getting doubled can help expedite some of these projects that these organizations would like to do. So we also put that in the bylaws. Lastly, some of these organizations don't have bylaws. Some of these organizations, they might not be always township residents for the most part. So we put in a requisite that they had to be, at least 90% of the participants have to be township residents. If not, they can ask for us to kind of evaluate that and take a closer look at it. I think it kind of just depends. Like, I know there's a men's softball association, and some of those guys aren't all residents of the township. If they don't meet that 90% requirement, we can still come in and kind of take a look at that and give them a pass if need be. But we wanted to kind of make sure that like township residents are benefiting from our facilities. So that's why we put in 90%. Also, we want them to have bylaws. I think some of these organizations do not have bylaws. And so for them to have bylaws, it makes it easier for us as an SFAA organization to kind of oversee what they're doing. And we can kind of look at what are your bylaws asking you to do? And if you're having any difficulties, you know, refer to your bylaws or come to us if there's any issues. Let me see if there's anything. Oh. Lastly is like good standing. These bylaws that we proposed have a like requisite that these other organizations have to be in good standing. You could lose your SFAA membership if your, if your organization isn't meeting the standards that we have in place. And I think these standards are beneficial to the township, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
So what happens when, so two questions, actually. So how long do the orgs that don't have the bylaws, did you give them a deadline of when they need to like come into compliance?
We haven't, because we were kind of waiting to see what you guys would like to do. If you'd like to pass what these bylaws are stating on behalf of the SFAA, and then we can apply that to these organizations. I think all, once you pass these bylaws, I think all the organizations have to reapply with us after these become a standard. So I should, I failed to mention that earlier, so I apologize.
Second question. What happens if they go out of good standing for one reason or another? Have you guys thought that far down the potential pathway to understand what the repercussion is?
Yeah, so if, if they don't, if they aren't in compliance, then that just kind of means that they don't have preference over the field usage, right? So like, as a member of the SFAA, I do have field usage benefits where if I need to use that field, I can. And I'm working with the other organizations at that point in time, and I'm not getting charged anything. If I don't become compliant, then at that point, I'm no longer a member of the SFAA, and then I got to pay the rental fees to use those properties. So I think there is an incentive to stay compliant within the SFAA, because I know from personal experience, paying some of the rental fees, it does add up over time.
And in our facility rental policy, there's, there is a hierarchy. So first priority goes to the Athletic Association members. And then from there, they have to pay rental fees, and then they get second priority. So it does bump them down to priority, priority rank.
I had a quick question. Excuse me. First, thanks for your work on this. I know it was kind of a large undertaking, and you put a lot of time into it. I was curious if any of the other associations had any maybe pushback or reaction to the $10 fee that's proposed?
We haven't yet discussed that with the other organizations. We were kind of seeing, I know tonight you guys were going to maybe advertise or put it out for advertisement. After it goes out for advertisement, we were going to kind of get a temperature gauge in terms of what the other associations see. I don't know if, I really don't think $10 would be, you know, something for them to balk at. I think it's kind of the middle ground. But on my end, as baseball, I think it's like 50 bucks to play baseball, so now maybe you're looking at 60 bucks.
Is there a path forward for people? Just because you do want to make sure sports are accessible to everybody, right? Is there a pathway for folks that maybe can't afford it? Even though for some of us, it's, it's not a lot of money, but for some people, it is.
So each organization has the ability to waive registration fees. I know we've gotten families in the past at baseball, Steve. I don't know if you've had any families in soccer that have asked registration fees to be waived before?
Not that I know of.
Okay. I know we have, and we've always just waived those fees without question if anybody feels like they can't pay the registration fees.
And a question on terms of benchmarking, like other townships, you know what they're doing? Like St. Clair, West Day.
Yeah.
Canhamack, Short Tears, all this.
Upper St. Clair, I think was 20, Paula, right? And Bethel Park was 10. So we were kind of trying to stay within. We looked at $5. I know, John, you and I talked about that too. And like $5, I mean, you're bringing in...
Almost like, what's the point?
Yeah. It's at that point, it's like, yeah, exactly. It's not going to do much of, not much good at that point. A lot of these projects, we're looking at two, like $10,000 projects. So when you're pulling in like 30 some thousand a year, plus if they're going to pony up more money that gets doubled by the township, like, I think that would be a good incentive to dump more money into this. And then, you know, if they have any, I know like we need scoreboards, things like that. Those are, those are expensive items, but that'd be very helpful. And I know something else that's been discussed, and this isn't an SFAA issue, but rental fees possibly going into that same fund. So if there's outside organizations that are using our fields, and now we have some really nice fields.
Yeah, turf.
And some really nice fields. You're going to have, I would assume, tournaments here and tournament play where that's going to bring in a ton of revenue to the township. People will be renting out motels, a lot of team registration fees. And if that money can go into that same fund, that would be a huge benefit as well, because why not put some money into the community that we're getting from outside entities, right?
And it's not cheap. I mean, I have, I have kids in sports, and most of us do. And it's, it's not, it's not cheap. I think, you know, a recent tournament for lacrosse up north was like 30 bucks a kid or 40 bucks a kid just to show up for the day.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of kids.
Yeah.
So they made thousands that day.
And Dan, could you clarify? You said that $15,000 went to where?
So with the SFBSA, we, to get those new fields built up on Fairview, we had to commit $15,000 as a part of that grant application. So we gave $15,000 to the township. And then that money, that showed, right, Paula? That showed the grantor that, you know, we were committed to that project. And so we were able to move forward.
That's, okay, that's something we have to do. Okay. I mean, because the whole project's well over $2 or $3 million and they're getting $15,000. I don't want to be throwing nickels around like me and hole covers.
Right.
So I mean, if we could help them out with 15 grand, I mean, I...
Right. And with, with the fee too, when you go to get grants, they like to see multiple different funding sources. So now when we go write a grant, we can say that through the Athletic Association, they write a commitment letter saying we're, you know, dedicating $30,000 of this fee that's been collected through the years as part of the town to match. And it just really helps leverage funding.
All right.
And we had talked about potentially like using that money for, you know, like a sinking fund to replace the turf in 15 years or 18 years, however long it lasts.
Yeah. We can look at that.
Yeah, the fee is not for rental. It's not for routine maintenance. It is to, you know, build that fund up for when, you know, we have bigger projects that come, whether it benefits one organization, multiple organizations. It's a, you know, start planning for that continued revenue stream to, for these projects in years to come.
I just want to make sure that 15 grand, if they need batting helmets or bats or something like that, or new bases or mounds or something like that, you're not taking from that. We could, we could look at, try and help you out there as well.
Is it 15,000 per grant? So like with the football fields you're doing? Or not, the, the multipurpose fields, excuse me, that you're doing? Is that going to be 15 grand as well that they have to pay for?
Between, between soccer, football, lacrosse, and cheerleading, they're going to do 40,000 between them. But that's, this is all separate than this fee. So these fees is like for future planning.
Oh, okay.
Got it. Learning.
Yeah, if there's no other questions, I just thank you guys for...
No, we got you. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. I know Steve wanted to extend his gratitude as well. So thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
Thanks for that.
Thanks, Dan.
The work you do, I know it's not easy. So thank you.
Any other public comment? Ben, library. You have anything?
No additional comments. If there are any questions.
Oak Ridge Fire Department. Have anything?
I don't see them here, but you know, the report's there for your review. They have some stats and updates on their training.
Okay, I don't see Dan here from EMS. Okay, consent calendar items. Approval of minutes. Anything there, JB?
Just need a motion to approve. These are minutes from last month's meeting, or these are the October...
Anybody?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Payment, payment of bills.
Just a couple of things to point out before you pay them. I just give you an update on kind of the largest bills in your pile there. We do have our debt service, both the principal and the interest that show up here, as well as our insurance renewals for property and casualty, our December health insurance. And then Gibson Thomas expense for the planning at Fairview through grant, trail plan, rather, that's sponsored by a TASCIS grant. Sorry.
Everyone good?
Yep.
You're good?
Need a motion to approve payment of bills?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pay the bills.
Looking at Becky.
Financial reports.
Yes, financial reports, maybe starting with the budget to actual, just a few of the highlights. You know, taking a look at some of our indicators. The real estate tax year-to-date, I guess, is, as at the end of October, is up to about 97% of our, 94% of our projected number there. So those are, those are good signs. We did pick up some more on the real estate transfer. Let me get that in front of me, actually. Sorry. So we're at, that was one of those indicators that we had talked about before. This is with, you know, sales of commercial or residential property. We get a percentage. We had budgeted 940 for it. We're at 643. So we're trending a little, little under budget, although we've had two pretty strong months. Overall, you know, we're running, we're trending in the right direction. We have 18.2 in revenue so far. The general fund budget revenue was 19.4. So we're almost at 95% of our projected revenue. And on the expense side, 14.2 total. So we're only about 74% of our projected expenses. And trying hard to kind of finish the year light, so to speak, so that we have more money to put towards capital reserve and, you know, funding all those projects that we had, we had spoke about. So that's high level view of the financials. Unless you guys have questions. I know we have a workshop on the 26 budget coming up next week.
I'm good.
Hi, Ann.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Six D, bank account balances.
Yeah, really just there for transparency sake, but get a sense that, you know, we do have the capital reserve built up. General fund is strong as well. So we're looking to, you know, end the year with a surplus, which is good.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven liaison reports. Public safety, we're missing Chuck. Pass that. Public infrastructure and service.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Leanne, finance administration.
So for Shake Hog, it was their annual dinner. And then, so there wasn't really anything to report for that. The next meeting coming up, they are looking, I will say they are looking for a new executive director. I know Chuck is not here, so I did attend the fire meeting last week. So one thing on that, I think we're finalizing the fire coordinator job description, right? And I know we're still looking at just benchmarking some of the salaries there, I think. Right, John?
Yep.
Yeah. The target is January 2026 to fill the role. If we approve the job description, like, we're going to post that and do some interviews. And I said, John, you would work with all of them on what the interview process would be. The first due contract, the implementations moving forward. They got a new, you got a new account rep, though. So I had mentioned if there's any delays, just to make sure. Like, if the delay is on their part, to let me know. And then we can do something to extend the contract to make up for it. And I think that's it. So, sorry. I'm just, I had to like read all of it.
Yeah, thanks for attending.
Thank you. I have nothing to report on intergovernmental relations. Mark with community economic development.
Yeah, I just, just want to mention that, you know, things are moving forward with Newbury Market down below. So hoping to see some, some positive things here in the next couple of months.
Eight, old and unfinished business. Anything, John?
No, 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 nothing unfinished.
We'll move to the number nine, then. New business. Nine A, discuss and consider SP-03-2025 South Fayette Commons preliminary and final land development application parcel 256-S-9.
Yeah, Jason, you want to share?
Yeah, I'll jump into that. The applicant's attorney for both item A and item B, which would be the subdivision and the land development, provided documentation to our solicitor today that they requested to be tabled for both of these items.
Okay. Chris, can we just?
Yeah, just do a motion to request the extension of time and to table items A and B.
Do we have that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two birds with one stone, right there. I like that.
Double.
Okay, let's go to C then. Discuss and consider S-07-2025 pot subdivision, preliminary and final minor subdivision application at 291 Sagin Road, Zone R2.
This, this is a large piece of ground, but it is a minor subdivision. There's only a few lots involved. There's no land development projected at this time. We did provide a review letter. It stated October the 9th. The planning commission reviewed the plan at their last meeting, and they recommended approval. The applicant and the consultant have provided additional information to address our comments, and our recommendation is to approve the application.
You have any questions? We good? Need a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Nine D, discuss and consider a motion to accept the request from the South Fayette Township School District to modify their developer's agreement to extend weekday construction hours to 6:00 a.m. and permit construction on Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the SFTWP's SD, Bus Depot Land Development.
Say that five times.
I know. South Fayette Township School District Bus Development. Or Depot.
Basically, our construction standards have hours of operation for construction activity, seven to seven, Monday through Saturday. These guys are requesting to start an hour early and to work on Sundays as well.
Same as we did for the intermediate school, right?
Correct. Yeah. Is that right, Jason, that they have the same request?
It is correct, yes.
Okay. It's quite, there's no houses.
That's fine.
Correct.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine D, approved. Ninety, discuss and consider a motion to advertise ordinance 2025-04, amending and restating Chapter 2200, Article 8, local revitalization tax assistance, or LERTA.
Yeah, just a quick introduction. You know, the township does currently have what we call a LERTA program, which is a, you know, tax break on certain properties. It goes with a map. We've, we have been working, as you guys are aware, on revising the LERTA district as well as the LERTA ordinance. And one of the reasons we wanted to address this was, And one of the reasons we wanted to address this was, um, for whatever reason, when we adopted L R D, uh, some time ago, there were a number of, uh, smaller parcels that were, showed up on the L R D map, um, on, in areas that were completely built out. So, hard to imagine taking advantage of L R D along Miller's Run Road, uh, or places where infrastructure is already built. So what we did with this is just, uh, we condensed it, um, you know, we included, uh, large P E D districts that, that had been in it. Um, the, the changes that we made to the, uh, the map would include, in addition to those reductions, um, we had previously had both a five and a ten-year L R D. The ten-year L R D, we, um, called a distressed property L R D, um, and it carried a ten-year, um, rebate or program with it. Uh, we're proposing to just make all of the L R D district five years and have just a simple straight-line schedule, um, of a hundred eighty, sixty, forty, twenty, in terms of their, their discount. Um, and to, uh, clearly, um, articulate the uses that are eligible for it, um, namely by eliminating, um, uh, I shouldn't say eliminate, because residential uses never were permitted, uh, but we explicitly state in, in this newer version of the ordinance that, um, uh, residential properties are not eligible. So this would be to advertise it. We did have a hearing earlier in the year on this topic, so now we have a, a, uh, a draft ordinance and a map. Um, we'll get it out there, we'll make contact with some folks, get some feedback, and before it's adopted, you know, we'll have an opportunity to, uh, to review it again with you guys.
Perfect. Well, I like that.
Here we go. You guys are, you guys are full of it.
I'm gonna start singing it. I'm gonna start singing it. We need a motion to approve this nine E, though. Do we have a motion?
I think that version I was struck.
Motion to advertise.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Someone second it.
Yeah. Nine F, discuss and consider a motion to advertise ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five, adopting the bylaws of the South Fayette Athletic Association. That's what we're just talking about, right?
Yeah, Dan did a great job laying it out.
Yeah.
Um, this is getting it, you know, advertised, getting it out there, we'll get some feedback and same kind of thing before it's adopted. Um, you guys can have a chance to, to review it again here, if anyone else has comments, and, uh, get it in place for next year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Nine G, this, discuss and consider a motion to approve resolutions twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, accepting the collective bargaining agreement between South Fayette Township and the South Fayette Police Department for calendar's year January one, twenty twenty-six, through December thirty-first, twenty thirty.
Current agreement expires at the end of the year. You know, we've been in negotiations, I briefed the board, kind of on, on the progression of that. Uh, both sides are, are on the same page at this point. Um, you know, we're ready to bring this in front of you for adoption and get it to signature version and, um, be done for another five years.
I'll make that motion. Sorry, you didn't ask. Sorry.
Look, no, we didn't say anything, we just look.
But I need a second. Here you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine H, discuss and consider a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Collier Township for a boundary line adjustment in each municipality.
Right, this is a little bit of a, not an everyday issue, uh, you come across this. Jason, you probably dealt with this more, um, hands-on than I have. Do you have a high-level update for?
So there, there was a discrepancy, longtime discrepancy in the township line in that area. And, uh, this came to the forefront, primarily with Collier, uh, because they wanna do some rezoning in that area, and, and quite frankly, it needs cleaned up before they can do that. Um, so, you know, both municipalities shared in the cost of the initial survey and the recording plan element, and, um, it's been in the hands of the solicitors for the last several months to take it the rest of the way, uh, which, it sounds like everything's pretty much queued up for the end of the year here. Um, no one's losing taxpayers or, you know, that type of thing, none of the, none of the individual property owners are losing property, this was just the finding of the township line through that area.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Common sense.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine, I, discuss and consider a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, authorizing the township manager to submit a grant application to the statewide local share assessment grant in the amount of one million dollars for the South Fayette Township Public Works Building Project.
Right, yeah, we need, you know, this is a, kind of a boilerplate resolution for the grant. We thought the timing worked well in that, um, you know, apply by November thirtieth, we hear about it probably, um, second or third quarter of next year, and then there's a, um, maybe a two- or three-year window where we could, um, you know, have to construct. So, um, being that we're planning on getting to this right after the, the library project, um, we felt like a good one.
That's great.
Okay. Any questions? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. That's exciting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Nine J, discuss and consider a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, authorizing, no, I did that one already, right?
It's the same, it's the same thing, different project.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, it's a different project. One for the, um, Public Works Building, and this one for, um, Alpine Road Bridge Replacement. So submitting two applications to the same grant source, both require a resolution.
Okay.
Keep going, John.
Question, though, could we, could both projects get approved, or is it just?
Potentially.
Okay.
Yeah. Probably not, unlikely, but.
It'd be a special day, it would be like hitting the lottery, yeah. Not even hitting the lottery.
Never know, Pat.
It's not gonna happen.
They have to go around each district.
Yeah.
Nice thing about this program is there's no required match on your end, so even if they would grant you five hundred thousand, you don't have an obligation to match it.
So I just have a question.
We're hedging our bet on this one, because last year we put one in for Alpine as well, and that wasn't awarded yet because of the budget crisis in Harrisburg, so they're supposed to award this month, so we'll have a better idea this month if we got awarded, so we potentially, it potentially might come through.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just seeing this as, okay, you have a shot at one of the two, like, if we wanted to do the first one over the second one, it's still a million dollars, I know, but I'm just, it can't be switched, right? It is what it is, so once you pick, if you get the, yeah. Right? You get the bridge or you get the, uh, you know, the Public Works Building? Okay. But our, our chances are better, submitting two.
Yeah, and I think in both these instances, these are projects that are not necessarily dependent, we're gonna do both.
Correct. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Me?
I need a second again.
No, we're just trying, we're working.
We've done a system here.
I pointed her, someone signed me. We're still learning, all right?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Discuss and consider a motion to approve pay app, or one to melee melee in Suns in the amount of two hundred two thousand seventy-six dollars and ninety-six cents for the Panhandle Trail paving project.
So they completed the work here, and they had some restoration to complete, I believe they did it, did you, you checked on it today?
That's correct, yeah, the timing was a little bit off here. We, we did, uh, recommend five percent retainage, um, and since then, they did complete the project, but that retainage will be on for next month's meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah, all the work on this was completed.
Yeah, we're good.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go, guys.
Now we're getting better.
Here we go. Nine L, discuss and consider a motion to advertise for board and commission vacancies.
Right, so we have a number of vacancies that expire at the end of this year, um, zoning board, Board of Standards. Uh, library is in February, so I think, you know, we're not necessarily gonna move on those right away, but, uh, we wanted to, um, get applications from the public on these and, uh, also give the incumbents an opportunity to submit their interest in, in, um, continuing. So we're advertising now, um, we'll look to schedule some interviews with interested folks before the end of the year and get them on our December agenda.
Perfect. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine M, discuss and consider a motion to approve tax refunds from Jordan Tax Service.
Uh, these are refunds that came through just a appeals process, nothing to do with.
They have appeals process, unfortunately, some of them are stale, so.
Okay.
We're working through that.
Yeah, we have some issues there, but, yeah, okay.
She's smart.
But we're good, though, Pat?
Yes.
Motion to approve, nine M?
I'll make that. Motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine N, discuss and consider a motion to extend an offer of employment to, is it Sam Greco? A new police officer. Chief, you wanna add anything to that?
Uh, no, he passed all of his, um, tests, so he's ready to go, he's been fitted with uniforms, and so he's gonna start December first.
Perfect. Sam Greco, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Sam.
Welcome, Sam.
Department reports.
Yeah, thank you, uh, just a couple of things to touch upon, um, you know, Chief just mentioned, um, replacement hire in the, uh, police department, um, went through something similar in Public Works, uh, both on the streets and in the parks, uh, departments. Um, we've hired, uh, Mike Meglin, uh, in our streets division, and Mike actually was able to start on Monday, and Jake Chabala is joining our parks department on December first. Um, you know, just giving you guys kind of an update on that. Um, a few other things to share, uh, regarding the, um, Apex Newbury Apartments on Oak Ridge Road, we, we have issued, uh, certificates of occupancy for two of the buildings, the S one and the S two buildings, um, so just wanted to, you know, give a, a special thanks to our B C O. There was a lot of time required to do, uh, all the inspections that, that took place there, so, um, Joe put a lot of time into it, so, uh, two of them are open, um, they'll be starting the three and four buildings here in the not-too-distant future, and, um, I know we're, we're all kind of eager to see the success that they have, um, on Oak Ridge. Um, you know, Mark, you mentioned the Miller's Run rehabilitation project, um, Ben, Paul and I met with our consultants on, you know, the interior finishes for that building. Uh, they previously submitted sixty percent drawings to us, um, and their target is to have ninety percent drawings to us by December first. Um, we're on target to have the projects, um, out for bid before the end of the year, um, and looking to award it in the first, first quarter of next year. And then just a note on the budget, you know, um, we have a workshop on Monday, um, we've been spending time as a staff, just kind of going through general fund and capital stuff, um, we took direction you guys gave us at our first workshop and bring that forward to you on Monday night. Um, if you guys have any questions, I mean, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. If we could send out that invite, though, for Monday at six-thirty, so we can get it on calendar.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Pat?
Yes, Commissioners?
Before you start, congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're happy for you, okay? Well done.
Um, I really don't have much to report, I mean, you can look at my report, there's a number of, obviously, issues that probably John briefed you in executive session on with some of the things on my report, so if you have any questions, I'm open to them.
No, I looked at it, yeah, and I'm good.
Okay.
I just had a question on the L R D, right? If it's five or ten-year?
On the school.
On this, for the school order for the?
P E D.
For the P E D, is that five or ten, you know?
I'd have to look, I wanna say on their application, I don't remember seeing a ten-year, but I'd have to go back and check. Sometimes the applications don't match the meeting minutes, so I need to go back.
Just overall, I was just, yeah, just curious.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Pat.
We'll make sure you guys have that info before, you know, you're asked to formally adopt that ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, ten C, building permits?
Yeah, we gave you a kind of report of the building permits for the month, you can see almost all of them are residential permits, kind of a slow month for both residential and commercial. Only thing on the commercial side was a, a sign permit, um, so, uh, that, that really sums up a, kind of a, a slow month for us in terms of, of building and permitting.
Okay. We've got ten D. Andrea?
Hello, Andrea Igler, Director of Communications and Community Development. Um, we published on Halloween the, uh, latest issue of South Fayette Connect, and, um, our, uh, ad revenue from that exceeds the amount of printing and mailing cost, and we've gotten great feedback on, um, especially on articles such as the Sturgeon Neighborhood Spotlight, uh, the Waste Management Calendar, um, that people save and so forth. Um, also, we, um, met with the Homeowner Association Leadership Forum, that's the, um, a group of homeowner associations from throughout the township who are meeting quarterly here. They asked if, uh, department heads would come and speak with them to talk about the departments and ask questions and so forth. Um, I participated, as did Paula Willis, Dan Dernosek, and John Phoenix, thank you for taking the evening, everyone for doing that, and, um, they were very pleased with the information they got, and, um, we are, we are seeing increased, um, activity with just communications between us and various HOAs, as they feel more comfortable with us and interact with us, so that's a nice, um, plus to all of this. Um, I've also been working with Parks and Recreation for the Thanks For Giving Annual Sponsor Advertising Luncheon, which is, uh, this Friday, um, and I know the Commissioners are invited. We had, um, seventy-two sponsors this year. Um, we have about, um, seventy-eight percent of the revenue we brought in is associated with the magazine advertiser portions of the sponsors, and we had, uh, fifteen events, um, so just lots of great numbers that we'll share with the folks during Thanks For Giving and have a chance to interact with the businesses and thank them for their, you know, partnership throughout the year. Um, and this is a, I believe, a kind of a record year, every year we've been more and more sponsors, more and more revenue, more participation, so that's all looking great. Um, other than that, we're advertising a lot of drives, food drives, toy drives, blood drives, and, uh, getting ready for twenty twenty-six, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, engineered report?
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, we talked about a, a lot of our items, but I'll, I'll give some, uh, highlights on some ones that we, uh, perhaps have not touched on. Uh, the demolition projects, uh, eighteen Morgan Street is, um, that work is complete, they need to, uh, complete one item relating to the sanitary lateral with the authority, but then that one would be closed out. Uh, fifty-one South Fayette Street, um, Koski was awarded that one, and, uh, we're expecting them to start that one any day now. Um, so that, that one really, by the time of next meeting, that one should be down. Uh, I did wanna update the board, a few meetings ago, you did authorize the signature of the developers' agreement for phases three, four, and five of Stone Gate, uh, but we kind of hinged that on them doing some remediation work at the entrance, they did complete that work last week, we inspected it, uh, signed off on it, so, uh, you will be able to execute that developers' agreement at this time. The contractor was previously authorized by the county to do some clearing, so they've already kind of done what they could do permit-wise, they were just waiting on the developers' agreement, so they will start developing that site, uh, in the coming weeks. I don't know if you were aware, not yet, but Bass Pro Shops did receive their environmental permits that they were seeking, so, uh, that should possibly be moving here shortly. Uh, Tractor Supply is gonna be executing their developers' agreement in Newbury here shortly, and we have, uh, we'd previously gotten a, a grading plan for Alpine Point Lot Four, they did, uh, uh, just submit this week their, uh, plans for final land development, so that'll be coming through the Planning Commission as well. I don't think they have a proposed tenant of that site, but they are, um, proposing a, a multi-use building, um, on that, uh, that parcel.
Yeah, where's Alpine Point, is that down by?
Alpine Points, it's up, it's up by the, on seventy-nine. Hickory Grade, before Boys.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
Alpine Road before Washington Pike.
You good?
Yeah, sorry, I was just wondering.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
Yeah? Facilities report? Oh, Vitale, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Vitale.
Good evening, Commissioners. Page number five, um. Major repair has been completed to an outdoor, uh, unit, uh, that was major malfunction. We had a contractor out there for three days fixing the problem, anticipated the cost of repair slightly over eleven thousand dollars, and you see the details photographs on the following page. Grants, uh, worked on, uh, two, two grants, uh, for Public Works Rehabilitation, uh, project, and, uh, worked with Gibson Thomas on Alpine, Alpine Road Bridge Replacement Project. Panhandle Trail, it's, it's been previously mentioned, it's complete, uh, this project is under budget by thirty-four thousand dollars. I finalized twenty twenty-six paving, uh, paving program, and worked on a guide rail study, uh, in the detail, detailed report is available upon request. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Vitale. Parks?
Thanks for remembering me, unlike Chuck, always forgets me. So, um, update on the trails through Fairview, um, Gibson Thomas had a meeting with PennDOT um, for our TASSA funding for the trail along Recreation Road, looks like we're getting more money, we're probably gonna get over a million dollars from them and fully fund the project, so we added a few more little, like, spur-offs to the trail, like, actually connected to amenities, it just made sense, you needed to get connection from the trail to, like, the Rotary Pavilion and some things, so they agreed that they're gonna fund that, so we're getting more, more money from them, which is great. Um, Ball Field's still under, under construction, um, the, uh, the multi-purpose fields, Gibson, Gibson Thomas, um, turned, um, material back into field turf for them to update their numbers, and then Gibson Thomas will be submitting it to, um, the Conservation District for the N P D S permit, we should have, um, hard numbers from field turf probably next week sometime. Parks guys and Public Works are starting to put Christmas lights up, um, so we have Joy Through, um, Fairview coming up on December fifth. Um, new this year, we are partnering with the school, they're gonna bring a stuff-a-bus to the park, so, um, everyone's told to bring one toy, and then they'll put it in the, the school bus for them. Um, a new event that we did was the Haunted Harvest at the Farmer's Market, um, so special thanks to John Koski and the Farmer's Market Board for letting us use that facility, it was great, um, to be under shelter, 'cause it started raining right at the end, so it was great that we didn't have to fight the weather, um, great turnout, we had over seven hundred kids, that was about over three hundred and fifty families, so that's probably about twelve hundred people in attendance through the night, so another very successful, um, event, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Awesome.
Thank you, Paula. Anything?
Thanks, Paula.
Chief?
Good evening, John Phoenix, Chief of Police, um, our October report, uh, we answered four hundred and eighty-seven calls for service in October, and our officers made a hundred and thirty-eight traffic stops in October. Um, on October twenty-second, we participated in the twenty-ninth, uh, Operation Safe Stop, where officers followed our school buses throughout the township, uh, for that day, uh, we made two stops and sighted the individuals for going through, uh, the lights on the, on the school buses, so that's the, um, I think the twenty-second time we've participated in that, and it comes around once a year. Um, we had thirteen officers out patrolling during Halloween, so we were out in full force, we hit every neighborhood, we gave close to two thousand giveaways.
I heard, it was great.
Yeah. It was overseas. Yeah, we made the news.
It was overseas.
Yep, so, and there were no reported incidents or anything that were reported whilst during that time. So if there's any questions, that's all I have.
When's the coffee this month?
Uh, next month. December 10th will be Coffee with the Chief down at the Sturgeon Fire Hall.
Sturgeon, December 10th.
Free doughnuts, free coffee. Can't beat it.
Like I said, there's no food like free food. I'll be there. December 10th.
Bring the whole family. Bring the whole family for dinner.
Of course, another busy month. Last month, our sign guy was busy with signs, putting new street signs up. They knocked over, and we, he was able to fix them all. Mechanics were busy, they're putting new tires on trucks, fixing brakes for inspection and getting ready for snow. One of our guys were putting salt boxes on. All our trucks have salt boxes on right now, all ready for the snow. Our Parks guys have been busy. The slo, the grass had been slowing down, so we've been able to catch up on some Parks events, I should say. So right now, we're working on the fields for, we're overseeding them, air aid, and we'll start top dressing them all, so. Down to picture there, our, that floor down, is it down to Mayview Building? It's, it's complete now, except where the, where the offices is going. It's, we're not going to complete that yet. So it's ready to go here in another couple of weeks, once the sealor dries. And on the right side was our trunk and treat thing for the, from the Public Works side of it.
Decorate that yourself, Dan? That looks like, that looks like your work. Yeah, thanks for doing that, that was nice.
Thanks.
Next, we have, we worked on Hickory Grade where the, it was sinking by Rolling Hero's Ranch. We dug all that out, we put new stone in and repaved it all with binder and top. We had a stormwater project down in Garage. We took care of an inlet and fixed it and report and re-asphalated it. So that's finished up. And then we're in process of patching holes right now for the end of the season. Hopefully, we get them all done before the plant closes. Any, any questions or anything?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Request tracker report, JB.
Boy, we have a lot of trash complaints this month. I don't know, Ariana, if you can, if you know, like, kind of what went wrong this month? But it seems like we have more than we typically do. I noticed by looking through, there's almost a page and a half of them. So I know, you know, we constantly stay in contact with Waste Management. I know there were a couple, you know, maybe potential property damage issues. I don't know if they made it on to here. But overall, Waste Management isn't pretty good about responding to our complaints and working with us to drill down on, on answers. And they typically have their, they follow through when they, when we tell them they missed calls, and they are able to, like, kind of pull up the routes that drivers had and can verify, like, the time and place of, of those vehicles. So I can tell you that trash days and recycling days are busy days for a lot of the staff in the office. I thank you guys for dealing with that. But other than that, everything seems normal outside of the, the volume of, of trash calls this month. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, John. Solicitor's report, do you have anything?
I don't have anything additional at this time.
Okay. Open up the public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Hello?
Hello.
No.
Hi.
Yeah, we can hear you.
You're good, you're good.
Yeah.
Good evening, members of the board.
Could you just state your name?
Oh, I'm getting there.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I have this all written down.
You're doing great.
My name is Dina Zimage. I'm here to address some concerns regarding the hiring process of the township. A little backstory. I have been a lifelong resident of South Fayette. I've also chose to raise my children here. I graduated from South Fayette and am proud to call it my alma mater. For the past two and a half years, I have applied for a job the township has offered to the public. My thoughts were the township would be ecstatic to be able to diversify their workforce, and I felt as though I was a perfect fit. Unfortunately, all went without responses, even to tell me that the position was filled. One position out of many that I applied for was a dedicated seasonal position for the Parks Crew that was posted all summer with little and no experience required. What brought me here tonight was my most recent status that I decided to touch base on. Upon applying for both the Public Works Crew and the Parks Position, I went to the Township Building in person to inquire about the status of my resume for the Public Works Department. Unfortunately, at the time, the Township Manager was unavailable. A young woman explained to me that my application, despite having all credentials, was redeemed a better fit for the Parks Crew. I proceeded to call about a month later regarding the application to the Parks Department. None of my phone calls were answered or returned. None of my emails were responded to. I approached the Township Building again, only to be told that there were a numerous amount of people applied for the position. That's when I acquired about the meeting that I'm attending tonight. Sorry. I'm not here for an impromptu interview. I'm here to address the concerns. My concerns lie in the lack of communication and failure to respond to any questions presented. The only question that I was going to present regarding my application was simple. Why? Why was I never called for an interview? Why were my inquiries about the status of my application not answered? Why could I not speak to somebody directly? I believe more information regarding the application status needs to be presented to prospective employees, specifically changing the practice to inform those candidates on why they did not meet the requirements so they do have the opportunity to obtain what is needed. Please consider these concerns. I know it can be difficult when members of the community present concerns to you and expect you to come up with solutions. I would be more than willing to sit down and discuss some with you at a later time, but unfortunately, I only have three minutes to speak with you tonight. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Renz Weinman. I just purchased a property on Tom's Run Road. Apparently, it was built in 1820, so it's older than the township. When I looked at the property, the building itself, it's been vacant for many years. It had good structure, good bones, so I wanted to buy it. I went to Jordan Taxer, well, I actually went online to the Allegheny County Assessment Site. Very little information on it. It said there was back taxes. So I went to Jordan Tax Service, and the gentleman said, are you the owner of the property? I said, no. He said, oh, I can't give you any information. I'm like, it's public property. I wasn't going to argue with him. I bought the property, and then I went back with my deed, and I got the information, and $60,000 in back taxes is what they want. So I said, wow. And the property is actually in Cecil. So tonight's agenda went through an item that addresses this particular problem. So the property is 95% in, it's not Cecil, in Collier Township. And a small sliver is in South Fayette. But yet, my taxes are to South Fayette and the South Fayette School District. So I asked Jordan Tax Service. They outlined a payment plan to pay it back, and they said they couldn't explain why. It's in Collier, but it's paying South Fayette. So I went over across the street to Allegheny County Treasurer's Department. I had five people standing there, looking at this big board with the map and everything, and they're all puzzled. They're like, yeah, we don't know why, you're going to have to go to South Fayette. So I decided the quickest way to find out is if you go to the school district and you give them the address, there's somebody there can say, oh, yeah, your kids are going to go to this school. Well, I went there, saw it was open, I took time off work, drove there, went upstairs, a little foyer, a little vestibule. No, not a person. Beep, beep, little intercom. Hello? I'm like, yeah, I'm here to talk to somebody about the school district and, 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 oh, that woman works from home. You're going to have to send her an email. I'm like, wow. This is the face of South Fayette. Any resident buying property, this is who they're going to face. Some email and a intercom. So I write her an email, and she says, yeah, it's South Fayette. I'm like, wow, okay, good. So I go out to the property, no power, start working on a Saturday. I have to cut back overgrown vines, up plants growing out of the gutters. And I get home exhausted, and I find this violation notice from the code enforcement officer of South Fayette, a community growing together. And he says, it's come to our attention that the property, mind you, it's been vacant for 10 years. It's got trees this big growing everywhere through the property, that this property is a nuisance property and is not, if not addressed, is violation notices and potentially citations. Well, I did get the violation notice. Well, that's what brought me here, because it's, it's not, I came to contribute how to improve, right? So he could have sent a letter that said, Mr. Weinman, we understand you just bought a property in South Fayette. We, let me be the first one to welcome you. If you need anything, and as you know, the property doesn't comply with township ordinances, reach out to me, we can work together to see which ones we need to improve to bring it into ordinance, because we're trying to be a top-tier community in the South Hills. So here are my hours, call me whenever you can. But when you get a letter like this, it's just infuriating, makes your eyes bleed. So, and plus, under 18 USC 876, it's a federal crime to send threatening letters through the US mail. This one is on the border because it doesn't extort cash, but it does say citations, and which means money. And again, it, all it does is it, it creates anxiety, and who wants to sit in front of you with anxiety? So my recommendation is that they want $60,000 to pay. And I don't understand why South Fayette had a tax collector that went 10 years without collecting taxes on this property. I mean, how can, how can it slip by? You guys went through all the numbers tonight, but are there other properties out here that the tax collector did not collect taxes for, for 10 years? And why am I now? I'm buying it, I'm buying to improve it, and they want me to pay fines, interest rate, commissions for Jordan Tax Service? I, I'm, I'm, I'm just out of my mind. And technically, it should be Collier Township, which has a lesser rate millage. So it's either $45,000 or $60,000. I don't have kids right now, and I prefer to pay $45,000. Although I understand South Fayette is a better community to be in. It's beneficial to me to keep that property in South Fayette. And I hope this thing that they're going to do, intergovernmental cooperation, that line shouldn't have been there, should be in the middle of Tom's Run Road. Yeah, and then also, the school district, that person. I mean, that's the face of the township. Get a live person, give, give somebody, somebody has to come out and say, how can I help you? Thank you for being a member of South Fayette Township. And what was the other one? The code official, you know? Again, the way they, they, they do their work is a reflection on this board, you know? Are you guys, somebody's in charge of him. And just change his, whatever template he uses, it'll be so much better, make you guys look so much better, if you can do that. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Commissioner, I'd like to do something this evening. Thank you. Would you come down here?
So you were honored earlier this year with a little bit of an award. So I'm here to honor you this evening with a proclamation from Allegheny County, congratulating you on your award. So Commissioners, whereas the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners, PSATC, founded in 1925 and representing first-class townships across the Commonwealth, advocates for effective, efficient, and transparent local government, providing education, legislative advocacy, and leadership development to township officials throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas, on Friday, October 11th, 2025, during the 99th Annual Dinner in Erie, PSTC President Dennis Arthur presented the President's Award for Outstanding Leadership to South Fayette's very own Commissioner Rebecca Sray, recognizing her exceptional dedication, integrity, and service to her community. And whereas, since 2018, Commissioner Sray has exemplified the spirit of public service, devoting herself to making South Fayette Township the best it can be through collaborative leadership, thoughtful decision-making, and steadfast commitments to the residents' needs. And whereas, as a lifelong resident of South Fayette, Commissioner Sray's connection to her community runs very deep. Her efforts have strengthened local government operations, enhanced recreational opportunities, and supported sustainable growth while preserving the township's small-town character and strong sense of community. And whereas, the PSATC President's Award is reserved for those who embody the highest standards of local governance, individuals who demonstrate leadership that uplifts their community, fosters trust, and advances the mission of township government throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas, Commissioner Sray's recognition by PSATC underscores both her personal dedication and the broader excellence of Allegheny County's municipal leaders, who continue to serve as models of good government and civic responsibility. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Council President Patrick Katena, do hereby recognize and congratulate Commissioner Rebecca Sray upon receiving the PSATC President's Award for Outstanding Leadership. Congratulations.
That's so nice.
Speech.
Speech.
That's awesome.
You're very welcome.
Very nice, that was nice.
That's awesome.
That was nice. Congrats, Beck. So do we have anything else? How about a motion to adjourn?
Make that move.
Second, make that.
Whatever.
All in favor? Let's get out of here.